Gareth.
I've been asking the question to join, but it's not.
I just had Karen on as well, saying that she can't get in.
Well, as I say.
There we go.
People should be out. If you ask them to come via the web or not. Teams.
That's where I come in anyway.
Can you ring Karen to tell her to come in through the web?
Now, just by word transiting, are we quoted with just four members?
Yes.
Have we tried inviting councillor Morris to join or you just can't?
Just tried and tried. Unfortunately, I don't have any telephone numbers for anybody who wants to join new councillors. So. The electoral registration just provided names and addresses. That's all we have.
All right. Well, should we crack on? Because there's quite a bit in this one to crack on. And just another question, because we might not get to the end of it. Does our two hours start from six o'clock or two hours start from now?
Starts from the start of the meeting. Because it's a separate meeting now.
Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. New councillors and old. I've got no announcements to make since I've been there 10 minutes ago. Have we got any statements from the public, Gareth?
No, but we should have a presentation if I can get him to connect. Non-gambles should be coming. Because I said I'd wait until the start of the meeting. If he talks, we'd obviously have to consider this in the next. If you want to move forward, chairman, and then when he comes up.
Yeah, sure. Apologies for absence. I think we can.
Same.
Can we get councillor Morris's apologies, just in case he's not, or is he registered as attending?
Well, he's just come in now, so he's attending.
Brilliant. Fantastic.
I presume he can hear us.
There you go. Okay.
Excellent. A declaration of interest from anybody?
Yes, there will be one from me for item seven, groundwork. Page eighty-four, this basis that I use for the garden services to cut my garden. On my lawn. So it's a personal interest. I don't need to prove it to you.
Right, great. Anybody else?
Oh, there's councillor Morris. I can see him.
Yeah.
Haddy, huh?
He's there.
Nipped down the shed and got a large hammer and hit the computer with it.
The best thing you've seen all day, councillor Haddy.
So to receive the financial reports. Groundworks quotations, the first one.
Sorry, I'm getting messages here. The first one is the groundwork quotation. I'll be correctly pointed out. We went out to tender, as you can see, for the services to the new members. This is the watering of the plants. Plants themselves. Set for contract from Dewing College, who put them in next month, so then they need to be watered. It also covers the cutting of the grass and joint hedging at the former Penarbrin Cemetery. And we've added as well some maintenance of the square and around the town hall. John has now arrived, so if you want to take this item. Obviously, we went out to tend, as you see, to a list of people. We've got two quotes back and Corwin Garden Services has come in at a cheaper price. And therefore, the recommendation is that we go with Corwin Garden Services for the next two years with a third year option. And there's a retail price fluctuation. And so in September, whatever the API is, or CPI, we use, sorry. That will be adjusted to inflate the value of the contract for next year for them. So that is built in as well. And then if everybody's satisfactory, there's the stretch of the third year. If they're happy with that.
Very good. Does anybody have any comments apart from councillor Haddy?
What kind of ballpark figure are we looking at?
Well, it's coming at nine thousand six hundred here. And the devalue means this was fifteen thousand. So it's, sorry, for two years. And that's comparable with what we were paying last year, a lower rate. So I can see a problem. And they have worked with us before, prior to this previous contractor, who's the one that's been in a higher price. Yeah.
Yeah, basically, we've got two prices in fifteen thousand and nine thousand six hundred. It's one of those pages in the 102 pages that were in that email. So you haven't quite read it.
Page eighty-four.
Is it, sorry, is it worth maybe seeking a few more quotations? Going forward, I'm just thinking, if you've, if we've put the tender out and only two have replied, is it worth waiting? Or maybe advertising it a bit further afield?
Well, we went to, I think it's six, is it? Seven companies and only two came back in. One did express an interest to come and see the sites that have visited, but then subsequently tendered. So the thing is, we've got to start this in June, because this is when the plants, we've had to delay it for technical reasons, shall we say. So really, it's on a bit of a knife edge. It's the second time we've gone out and again, it's only these two that have actually submitted any quotations at all. So the likelihood of getting further ones. You know, we've gone within the vicinity, because obviously it's the browsers now, because we don't have the space to store the browsers. They've got to tow the browser in to do the watering. So, you know, we can't go too far afield, because obviously there's new contractors. I think it's reasonable compared to what we have in the past. I doubt whether we'd get any more interest.
Can I say that both these contractors, we've used them before, so they're both known.
So they both know the job. So basically, do we have a proposer to accept Corwin Garden Services?
Sorry, could I just interject for a second? You say when they're watering the flowers and they're bringing their own browser, I presume they're also supplying their own water?
No, this is. We have a browser which we provide to the contractor and then they fill the browser from the taps of the town hall before they bow to early morning. But the browser is something we like them to look after for the duration of the contract to us, to know how they get the or where they store it. And they fill it up from the town hall garage and then go out to do the watering round, which is all the hanging baskets and all the three-tier planters and all the planters on the bridge. And then obviously pass the street, Abbey Road. So it's quite a lot of water to be done twice a week. Thank you.
So do we have a proposer?
Am I precluded from?
No, no, you can propose, John, because you've described it. It's only a personal interest. It's not a community interest.
I propose we accept the quotation from Corwin Garden Services.
And a second.
I think it would be good practice to get at least three quotes. However, Gareth's obviously gone out to various places and managed to get two, and the price in comparison seems reasonable, so I would second it.
Lovely. I will jump back to.
Could you, all in favour, chairman?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. All in favour? Anybody against? Cool. Seven, Christmas illuminations refurbishment.
Yes, again, for the new members. Last year, we had a few issues. Our illuminations, which we were putting up a lot earlier because of the words on the street. Unfortunately, that meant that when we did notice a lot had failed, it did give us actually trying to get something up for the year. It wasn't the best, but we could get in the shop every time. I mean, we rented those from Blashair, Blashair, a few numbers of years. Blashair actually supplied us with our original cross-street illuminations or motifs, as they're to be called. So the situation was that we have these motifs that we damaged, something that was very well, so we had to the colour change. And therefore, as we were returning the highest stock, the asset management committee and councillors' house, we resolved to see if we could get these motifs refurbished to use again. And with these opportunity to return them when they fitted the existing or the higher stock. We've done that and they have indicated, as I say, that they can refurbish the stock for one thousand nine hundred and ninety pounds and eighty-five pence plus the VAT. VAT going for new members. We don't really worry about that, if we can reclaim all our VAT. So we will pay it, reclaim it. So given that it's like five cross streets, it's quite reasonable coming in at about three hundred and thirty pounds. And there's a couple, just two at the moment, of that X, our highest, a similar style, and they're five hundred and twenty. So even now, the refurbished is quite reasonable in terms of getting the motifs which actually sit the town quite well. So rather than invest a lot more money, it suggested that we proceed with the refurbishment. We also have, similar to the groundwork, that contract for the direction of the illumination stuff. So we can bring that back to asset management before Christmas to get quotations for that. There's one illumination which is from a different company. That's the ones that Merry Christmas made. That needs some work, so that one can be repaired in the summer. And then we're back to having the full suite of cross streets that we've had for a good few years. And yes, but obviously they are old, but you know, they they were asked if it was still effective for refurbishment, let us know. And obviously, they feel that they can.
I have to speak a bit too loud, look, Gareth. You're getting quieter and quieter.
Sorry. Best here, I don't know what it is. So the recommendation is that we do go with the refurbishment costs and get the works done. And get the stock back here in good time for Christmas. I know it's very early to Christmas, but we've got to get these things.
Can I just ask, Gareth, that that price includes collection and delivery?
Yes.
Both ways. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. Well, they've already got them, obviously, just delivering.
Oh, okay.
Two hundred pound delivery.
As the asset management have recommended that we take this line, I think it's reasonable to accept the figure and I suppose that we accept it.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to be quite important this Christmas for residents and the businesses in the town centre to make it look as good as possible. So I would definitely second that.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody against? Nope. Excellent. Banking arrangements.
Banking arrangements, yes. Issues here. Obviously, we declared a climate emergency back in October 2020. Part of that was to address not only, obviously, carbon reduction, but also looking at more ethical banking organisations. Those investing fossil fuels and other high-carbon industries. We were asked in our plan, we produced a climate emergency action plan on the actions that the council itself would take. And we had identified that to be done by September last year. But with one thing and another, mainly that obviously I knew that we would be having a new council within months. And the situation setting up of mandates for members to sign, to have to go through that with the former council and then the new council seemed rather pointy. So it's been delayed a bit, but I have done the research. And as you can see, the main banks that would sort of comply with the requirement would be unethical. Not investing in high-carbon and glutening industries are listed as pre-odious. Unity Bank and Reliance and the Co-op. I don't think who they are, what they are and their origins. The most ethical is pre-odious, but unfortunately, they're not taking new accounts. So we can dismiss them almost immediately. And then on looking at the other companies or banks that are available in the market. Unity Bank is one which has served a lot of other town and community councils, and I'm aware of their operation. They all charge fees, albeit the Co-op have a moratorium, and that was another reason we looked at it, because we weren't being charged fees at all by HSBC, but they introduced them last November. But it seems to be a situation that we just have to accept that fees have to be paid going forward. So I did an analysis and they're all different but similar. And when you balance it out, there's not much between any of them in terms of the monthly charge and the monthly charge for banking cash, et cetera. That's something we'd have to look at going forward to make sure we minimise our costs in terms of fees on transactions. But mainly, we do most of our transactions online, which wouldn't incur a fee. The other issue of Unity Bank is that it has this like triple lock authorisation. And so if I was to put a payment through on online banking, as it was in HSBC, I would do that solely on the basis of the next item, really, online, going up to the authorised payment schedule. If there was a mistake, then there was no other sort of audit trail to check that. With Unity, you could all be holders of the account. And then when I make the payment, you will all be emailed. And as soon as two of the appointed people that have been contacted agree that the payment is correct and gets paid. So it gives that added level of security. So you know that what you've authorised. You can then look at the authorised payments, see the transaction going through, and as long as we get two of the whoever's on the list, and I would suggest people all be on the list, the payment will then be made. So it's an additional audit. So the recommendation is that we move our banking arrangements to Unity Trust Bank, BLC, similar situation, a current account and a deposit account. And hopefully be able to do a switch, so it won't be as complicated as I'm dreading it's going to be.
Councillor Haddie's muted.
On that last note, it just struck me that one of the principal reasons what we investigated is quite apart from the ethics of the banking sector. And I think it's quite reasonable to assume that they're all robs. Was the cost of the charges, and there's no advantage in any of them, as the clerk has indicated. Is the slight advantage of the double checking of payments worth the bother of changing the accounts? Because my experience of, not personal, but charitable accounts being shifted between banks is that there's an awful lot of who-ha that's involved in it. You're confident, are you, that Unity Bank will be able to do it seamlessly?
I, I, I'm expecting some issues, but.
I hope.
You know, a lot of other clerks that use Unity and they seem to be very pleased with this. And a lot to face the same scenario, having to move because of urgency. So, you know, HSBC isn't the most ethical and it's shut and bank money now. I don't know how far we'd have to go to get money back, cash or even checks you can photograph and everything. But no, I anticipate there'll be a problem, but I think, you know, we'll get on through it.
Councillor Morris, if you'd have it.
Just out of curiosity, I'm not too sure. Obviously, we've only got one bank left in Clangon at the moment, and that's Barclays Bank. Would it be worth maybe approaching them to see what their status is on it, considering it would be quite nice to support the only bank that's left in Clangon?
Obviously, they're not ethical. They're far from an ethical bank. Their investments aren't as green as the others. And that was the premise that we were moving. That was the main inertia, was the fact that we declared a climate emergency. From that, we then adopted the climate action plan on the actions we can undertake as a council, and one of those wants to move. So we have an adopted resolution to do that. You don't have to do it. And just remember, you can decide if you wish to do all, you could just stay with HSBC. In terms of being with HSBC, apart from the fact they're not an ethical bank.
Councillor Felton.
I'd just like to come in there with, I saw some nowhere, I'll have coming from there, councillor Morris. But I'd just add, maybe in a civic, I think it's only a matter of time before Barclays abandon Clangon anyway. That's inevitable, that.
Probably is.
I just thought I'd.
Everything moves online.
Yeah. If they were a bit more sort of honest about how they look everyone around where they build their banks, then I'd back it. I'll have no problem at all on that, but I think they will stab Clangon in the back eventually. And clear off.
So. Any other comments? Do we move this then? Proposal? We could do with a proposer to accept it. Thank you. And a second.
Yeah, I'm in view of the fact that, I believe Barclays will eventually go. I'd second that.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody against? Nobody against. Thank you. Authorised payments.
Yes, so this slips in nicely, really. If you get around three, do you find it to act? One of the requirements is that we have at least two signatures, difficult during lockdown, but the authorised payment list, which is presented each month, is the list of payments that requires your authorisation for me to process, to be paid. It's a fairly straightforward list this month. Running through it. The bunting is in anticipation of our event, which is covered a bit later on for the Jubilee. Acrylic sheet. I've tried rather successfully to put some tiles or ten tiles up under the hand dryer in the office toilet, because it was, water was going everywhere and making a mess on the on the wall. So that's acrylic sheets to give that under that to cover that. Curry's business, I think I mentioned it to those who go to the induction. I already talked to our previous chair of asset management, it's councillor Keddie. Our fridge broke prior to lockdown. We haven't needed a fridge in the office, but now we're going back to full use of the office. We've all authorised to buy the fridge. The energy costs that are good energy translation, it's self-explanatory. Lilo skip hire, that was the cost for the hire of the skip whilst doing college catering room for the bedding plants and outplants the hanging baskets. So we need to clear the compost of citrus. That was that cost. Screw fix was some iron and re required for repairing doors after that break-in. We had to weld that. Ultra-clean is our contract cleaners to do two hours a week, town hall. Sorry, a day, but two hours a week, sorry, that's right, town hall. And then Jay Williams is window cleaning. He also cleans the memorial. So those are the these are type payments. And then we have direct debit, our cloud service, which is a maintenance of our office systems. The video confession equipment is money paid for the, it says, for the equipment to fit out the chamber so that we can move to hybrid meetings. Broadband is ours charged to the team, monthly charge. And NDR, that's our business rates on the town hall. So we're paying business rates. Rancor is the lease charge on the copier, something when we get to the end of the contract, bearing in mind we've done very footprinting during lockdown, something we need to lock down going forward. Nest pensions, that's two months pensions, increases and changes to the national insurance situation. So we have to adjust the data to Nest. So that's two months paid. And as Johnson is, we've got a storage unit that we hire, where lots of our, some of our Christmas decorations, excuse me, and other items are. So that's the breakdown of the authorised payments. And again, unless you've got some questions, you can propose and second them so we can get.
I just have one question, Gareth. The video confession equipment, that's obviously a high capital cost of five thousand pounds there for equipment.
Yeah.
Why didn't we buy it ourselves and claim the VAT back?
Because we went to tender, if you remember.
All right, okay. Just seems like a waste of a few hundred quid there. Anybody else got any comments? Do I have a proposer for the authorised payments? Thank you very much. And seconded, thank you very much. Financial statements.
Yeah, financial statements is a requirement for just to keep you in the loop, as it were. Again, these are produced from Scribe and it shows our various cost centers. So it gives you an indication, obviously, of our budget. And then what we're spending it on. At the moment, it's rather blunt in some areas because it's just divided by in twelfths. And we don't pay everything in twelfths. Going forward, it's a bit more work we need to do. We've only had this package one year, so it's a learning curve throughout the But any questions, as you see, there's only minimal, run out in the first month. It's just as different, obviously, a financial year is differently, Minnesota, a year. So there was authorised payments made by the outgoing council last month, which is shown. So that's why it's, some payments are ready, but unless there's any questions, it's just noting in the receipt to that chairman.
Pretty straightforward to me. Anybody else got any comments on them? Proposal? Proposal?
Okay.
Thank you, and a second up? For the new ones, you look a little bit bewildered. I know it was an awful lot to receive in an email, but all these bits of paper, they were all part of that 102 page document that we all read before every meeting. So, moving on. Town clerk's reports, co-option?
Do you bear with me a minute, chairman, I've got Mr Gamble here to help.
Oh, I can see him, I can see him in the background.
Right, so I will endeavor now to share screen and hand over to my eight colleague, this is Ryan, to do the presentation. Can you all see that this time?
Yeah.
Right, sorry for the long delay, can you hear me up there?
Yeah.
Okay, just to tell you through this, something we've been, I'm speaking now with half of both the Tidy Town team at St Cottler's Church. St Cottler's Church own the, oh, the recented body of the church in Wales, owns a cemetery and the wood, which stands on the former pens that were there in living memory and on dwellings that were there before. And Tidy Town team have been looking after that woodland area for a few years now with the church's permission. But have thought about, we've had complaints about litter there, complaints about the state of the cemetery. And this is an opportunity, we saw it as an opportunity, to roll the two into one and try and make the place a much better environment. That's a, if I just take you through where the location is, you all recognize that as the current map, it's 1850 of Langocklet. And you can see the woodland area, they're shaded in yellow, and the coming of the railway ate into that land, and of course moved the green up onto the playing fields by the side of Dinos Branda. And you all think you'll be accessed, it's adjacent to the cemetery and bounded by the river and Langocklet Railway, and of course you can see it clearly from the decking on the corner. The major element of it is developing that woodland area into something that's accessible, wheelchair accessible, and also accessible for visitors to the to the cemetery. People sometimes will have time to just meditate, to give contemplation, whatever. But we're also wanting to make it a biodiversity area, so there'll be insects, hides, or whatever, got refuges for small mammals and so on. And so biodiversity is a major element of that. But let's go across the bridge, this is what you see, walk by John Thomas's house. Left hand side, the station, the ramp going down on the far platform, and then that art piece of a gate which hasn't been shut for many years on the left hand side. Old wire fence, concrete posts, visually an absolute wreck. And the idea is to refence that, and we'd be done sympathetically, the gate would go and it would be fenced with chestnut palings and a disabled friendly gate going into the pathway which would be created inside, and that would give access to the wood itself and the glades within it. Again, you can see that fence in more detail there, where the sign is at the bottom about people not putting the litter, that's roughly where the gate would go, so that area would be tidied up. The shot on the right hand side of the screen, that's where you're back to the river. And that's currently a private hedge, which was planted many years ago, full of good intention, I'm quite sure, but hopeless for wildlife, visually unattractive, and the idea is to take that out. And the cow park would be made slightly bigger, and there'd be fruit bearing trees planted there in a line to cordon off the burial area. Also, with our backs there to the river, that's pretty much where the corner, where the cremated remains are kept. There's a heck of a mess on the riverbank, and you can see that from both directions there. The River Dee is, the left hand picture of the River Dee is to the left. So all those stones, river boulders which have come out of excavations and graves over the years. And you see that also on the right hand side as well. The idea is to grade that, to use the soil that scraped off the the area where the cow park will be enlarged, and to put a wildflower meadow in that place. The, just about seeing that right hand picture at the back, where cremated remains are. And the idea would be to just contain that, stop traffic going over that consecrated ground so that the visitors, often these are newly buried people, who are most, our friends even, the most that are here today, their remains are there, and currently it's not protected from vehicles. If we go into the wood itself, you can see there, there's lots of rubbish inside still. That is a neatly piled pile of asbestos, but there's building wastes, there's all sorts of things. There were 24, I saw houses there before the railways came. So there's quite a lot of heritage in this place as well, and the idea is to unearth that. As I say, the Tidy Town team, they're doing this for years, as a church, we've said, just do a light torch, let's let's do this properly, as when we get the chance, and this green spaces, our green communities project is giving that opportunity. So there's a whole history there, what was built there, where the town was in that little corner on one side of the river, the north side of the river, and all demolished over the railway. But then pens, and it's two awful big, you remember, unclos and tides having two or three hundred chickens and hens there. Some of the trees would be taken out, we already have the Derbyshire Tree Officer down to advise on that, and also a tree surgeon. Some of the sycamore invasive, we'd been putting this plant together three years ago. Most of the sycamores would have come out, but now with that dieback and large dieback, it's it probably wise to keep some of the sycamore in, even though they're not truly a native species because we could lose a lot of our broadwoods. Those trees that do come down, the branches overhanging the railway, they'll make log piles, and those will be habitats. And also there'll be appropriate woodland flowers and whatever else. There'll be fencing inside of biodiversity areas which need to be protected from human encroachment, and that will be placed strategically so that the pathways which have been put in there would just give viewing access rather than right to go throughout the wood. The two areas which are put here in this particular slide, which will be between 30 and 50 square metres. And they'll have the weed mats underneath, but they'll have the wood chips from the brush from the trees that come out to mangos areas for children, schools doing environmental projects. I had a really good meeting with the railway, with Tom Taylor there, who's headed it up for the Railway Trust. And he's anxious to support the project because it's an opportunity for children who are visiting, not just riding on a funny old steam engine, but learning about what was there before and actually doing forest school type activities in that area. And the, those open areas, they'll have the interpretation panels, which will be one on heritage. I'm speaking to the museum about that hopefully this week, about developing that aspect. And the others will be on butterfly lives, bees, bird life, insect life, and forest life generally. And these will be backed up with an app, so there'll be QR codes on the panels so that people can find out about the history, all about the flower life that's there. The pathways, that will be hard standing, that'll be using the shale from the quarry that also pass, I could bring your stuff down from that, the timber will be used, it'll be locally sourced, and a lot of it's rather tantalised. So just do the whole thing right. That path, it'd just be a metre wide, that's roughly where the path will be. And the timber edges will be pegged in place. The bird box will be put up, and that will be done properly to British Trust Royal Ethology Design. And that would be volunteering work, and there'll be a lot of opportunity for other people volunteering. Those who might not be in jobs anymore after Covid, who want to get outdoors. And Tidy Town team will be welcoming others to help there, or even other groups can use it. The whole all right, the whole costing on that is about, I think it's £25,000. And the church are providing the match funding for that. So we're not coming saying, give us some money, we're not doing that at all, this is self financing. But obviously, it's quite a major thing in the town, and we wouldn't want to do anything. Stuff can still be changed, you know, if we've got ideas of how it could be even better. We can't, we're not part of a clan because it's nature and wildlife and biodiversity. There'll be no access to the river from that side, all access policy fenced off because the two just don't mix. It'll be all walkable from town, and it would be basically for the town, there's another green space which is open, which is currently blocked off, it's fenced off, it's not accessible. And it can be used in conjunction with St John's Hall, but what's St John's Church, that's now a space, so that would be a dry, sorry, a wet weather venue for forest school or other activities. So that's the gamble story, I've tried to rush through it, and I've wasted too much of your time already. But I don't know, chairman, if you've got any questions or any observations.
First off, thank you very much for that, John. I think it'll go very well with the peace garden that goes on there during the stedward. It's a lovely idea. councillor Haddie? Sorry, John, you're on mute.
So, John, what exactly are you asking us to do, or are you just keeping this? Want some general support?
Well, I think, what I would like is, obviously, the support of the town council, because that would strengthen the bid. The proposal, the proposal, an expression of interest went in, which basically was this presentation. But a very detailed proposal is about to go in. If people, if the council are happy to give us support, that would be really helpful. But obviously, we wouldn't ask that if you've got any queries or reservations.
Does anybody else got any questions?
I'd just like to comment, I think it's a really positive thing that you're actually doing towards the biodiversity in the town, obviously. We're in a position now where obviously the environment and nature is a number one factor, and we need to be doing everything we can to protect it. And I think it's a really positive step forward in for the town especially, obviously. With everything's happening in the town centre, we do lack some green spaces now within the town centre. And I'm also really impressed by the fact that you are seeking local materials to help with the project. It's so much, it's very easy to end up buying stuff miles away, and then you don't end up supporting the local economy, so I do, you know, really do support you on that.
Scott?
Yeah, as some of you might know, I'm very interested in this source of stuff. And, well, I'm curious, what's the acreage of this site? I know it actually very well, I'm just wondering.
So it was 0.5 hectares, was it?
Half an acre, yeah, just under an acre, yeah. I just wondered, there's always talk about wildlife, flora, fauna, biodiversity, all that sort of stuff. I just wondered if any sort of survey work's actually been done already of what's present.
Sorry, there's a huge machine running outside this window, I don't know who's organised that, but I couldn't hear that. In terms of the survey, certainly bird surveys have been done, and very rudimentary surveys of mammals, no dormouse, dormice have been found, but we're all people in dormouse boxes as well. There is a dormouse trust. But it's currently the the wood, the base of the wood there has been so congested that nothing is really, it's not really part of it. Other woodlice etcetera under the, under the building remains. And so it would be working closely with Derbyshire Countryside Services and their biodiversity officer. The destruction will be an absolute minimum, will be just creating habitats. Bog hotels, there'll be places where single bees, non-collegiate bees can rest and such like, but there's been no proper university survey, and that's something we can commission.
Yeah, it's just that I'm always concerned about, you have these green spaces, and they they become a habitat in their own right, and you get your existing biodiversity already. And one of the biggest problems with this sort of thing is disturbance. So when you open it up, and you suddenly get a lot of people, the very thing that was there that brought these people there actually ends up destroying it. So the balance has got to be right.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's where the fencing areas, the fenced areas within, that's protected areas will be. But there'll be a lot more protection than there is on even on RSPB reserves. But there'll be a lot more protection than there is on even on RSPB reserves. And RSPB reserves don't just look after birds, they look after the whole system. So it will be totally sympathetic.
It's, will dogs be excluded? Can you hear that? Will dogs be excluded?
Sorry, I can't, I can't hear.
If you're going to let the public in, will dogs be excluded from the area?
There'll be, if dogs would be doggone leaves, we've not thought of that yet, to be honest, councillor. We'd have to think about it. For, I mean, cemeteries are not great places for dogs anyway, but a brave old gentleman or lady visiting a grave with a family pet might want to take a pet. So it's not somewhere for tourists and it's somewhere for refuge. So we're going to have to think careful about that, but it's a good point.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to point out that I've had this on behalf of a while, like, but literally fifty yards away from your little place there is probably the rarest tree in Frank Gotham. And no one, I know it's there, but no one else seems to know it's there, which is probably a good thing. But the cat's out the bag now, like. And it's the sort of thing, when you talk about surveys and things like that, how these things get missed. You know, so I'm just curious about that.
Right. Anybody else got any comments?
I think I would just follow it on from what councillor Felton said, and I agree with him on the biodiversity, that it'd be good to look into that more. But also about dogs, I think it would be really nice with any of these green spaces that are coming in to consider having a dog waste bin at the entrance, maybe with bags, because I know with, for example, the pocket park, I don't know if anyone's visited that recently, but there is a problem there with dog fowling and I think, especially when you're creating an accessible place, which I also think is brilliant. But if you're taking a wheelchair or something, that would be great to encourage dog owners to be responsible if we can, so, yeah, that might be worth considering in the plans as well.
Very valid. Well, thank you very much again, John. As councillor Haddie pointed out, are you actually looking for us to provide any financial assistance with this or?
No, 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 no.
Then we fully support you, I'm sure.
So, yeah, no financial assistance, but fully welcome. And if any of you want to get involved at all, you'd be most welcome, really.
So you're basically asking for a letter of support from the council, John?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you very much, I'm sure we can do that. And, oh, you're in the right place for it, actually, with Gareth right by your side.
I'll let him have my seat there, shall I? Thanks for having me and a good luck for this current, this next year for you as a councillor.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Just as a, as an aside while Gareth reseats, councillor Rush, the big problem with dog poo bins, which I thoroughly approve of, is the question of who pays to have them emptied, and that's always been a prickly one, which is one reason why the the canal trust aren't very keen on them up on the towpath. And a lot of poo bags hang in the bushes growing up penguin.
It's becoming a bigger issue though, I think, as dog ownership increases, the cost of them is becoming more valuable.
Poo bin, a dog poo pit would be probably better than just an empty compost.
Right, so moving on. Town clerk co-option, sorry, co-option of decision.
Yes, Chair, sorry. Getting back into the chair for a second over here.
Did we decide as a group of councillors to support this?
Yeah, I mean, it's statutory, it's different, just quick introduction. Under the Representation of People's Act, as we haven't got a full quota of members, but we are quarried, so we could meet. You are able to co-opt remaining members. The one thing that I picked up, which I should have, it's not under the two thousand and one measure, which is a Welsh measure. It falls under the Representation of People's Act and therefore there's a thirty five day, depending on who you speak to, some people they work in day, others say thirty five day limit on this, otherwise then the county council will step in and do another election. Now, they would do that. And because of that, whereas I'd said in the past, we've used an application form, I would like to suggest that we just do for a letter of introduction or a lettered, and I think the word in our service, telling us what they think they can contribute as a town councillor. We still have to do a formal notice, that's all, if you practice night, that's all due to vote. Go on the wall, yeah, sorry, on the wall, in the window here in the office, so let's use it up, display area. It'll go on our website, it'll go on social media. I already have several people interested, so I will email them the invitation to send a letter in to express their interest. And again, as it says in the report, you are free to speak to people or ask people if they're interested and ask them to contact me by way of a letter. So rather than sort of delay the process by people have to contact me, get the application form, send it out, send it back. Because of the time limited nature, we do letters of introduction. If we get them back by, I think I said the tenth of June, that means we could consider those we've received in the June meeting. And if hopefully there's more than we need, we can debate or if we get the exact number. If you're happy with the applications, you obviously then co-opt them as full members. So that's the process, Chair.
Right, so just to be clear, with the document that was sent, we've got a four page application form, that is now gone.
That'll go, yeah.
That's all gone. And the new recommendation, the recommendation in four actually takes care of that, doesn't it? But actually, four B continues to use the application form, we want to amend this, don't we?
So if you, obviously we moved, A would be to move to co-opt, B not to continue to use the application form, but seek letters of interest.
Yep.
And confirm the date receipt, we do that. I think I said the tenth of June on the notice, I did have around there, but it could give about two and a half weeks' time, but also sufficient time to then bring them back for you to have them before the meeting. And obviously, you need to consider the method for considering a set successful applications. Well, that would be considered in June meeting based on what is, what is requested, yeah, I said tenth of June.
Councillor Felton?
This cutoff date, tenth of June, would there be like a time on it, like four PM type thing? Like Dembeshu Council had when you were asking for nominations?
It would be up till twelve o'clock on that day.
Yeah.
Because if people email, it's email or letter, they can email in or even write, we'll stale mail. People may email on the evening and get it in at one minute to twelve and that would be accepted.
Or they can email, yeah, that's okay.
So do we have a proposal for this with the amendments?
Yes, I propose that.
Thank you very much. And yeah, we've got plenty of people there. Anybody against? Super job.
Next item is the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Again, the former council considered a proposal from previous councillor Brynley or previous councillor, former councillor Brynley to do something to celebrate Queen's Platinum Jubilee. It was supported and councillor Haddie also suggested that it should be really coordinated by the town council. So we've made many efforts as we can to do this, set up a working group to look into it or task and finish group, and they've now come back with some proposals. As you can see, we have the inner wheel, actually taking over the town hall with Tom Bowler, primarily because they've lost now that the rotary's collapsed. And there's no, they got baked up at last now is, they obviously need to raise funds. So they've seen it as an opportunity to enhance their coffers and also provide entertainment during the day in the town hall on a Saturday rather, to support the Jubilee weekend. At the same time, the group led by councillor Brynley and more recently councillor Sherman, I got former councillor Sherman, sorry. Better to have it. Have been working on a very similar event to the Christmas festival. So it requires the closure of Market Street to traffic and that occurs some costs. Not a closure cost, because we could do that under the Police and Towns Act at no cost to the council. The cost actually comes in diversion signs, having to have a contractor to do it. Now, at Christmas, that's about six hundred pound and similar amount for the Remembrance Sunday. But that involves a lot more closure of parking bays, parades etcetera. So I'm not expecting it would be that excessive this year, which is simple closure from Market Street, Basil Street to the East Street junction. And we're doing it for a longer period, we're suggesting from eight till, I think I said land in the closure, to allow properties or businesses in that area to spill out if they wanted to. Perhaps the ball, I want to take some tables and chairs, I'd later need any vulnerability to have them. So it would go beyond something like the five o'clock stop of the Christmas festival. And then Shay, who's here at the moment, he's been coordinating activities to take place on the square as we've done in the past, and that would facilitate performances. And for that, we will need a small staging area. So again, there's a cost associated with that. So I've summarised the costs, you can see the street closure contract cost of forty hundred. My opinion it'd be less than that. We will need first aid cover. The staging and the PA is going to be a hundred and fifty pounds. Catering and all the other allied, like the bunting you see today and other things for the tea dance, which is going on on the Sunday, which is the town council's element of this, to use the town hall. We've got posters prepared, we're going to take them to put at that last another old age, attention, let me, locations. And see if they want to get interested. Interested in coming along. We've got the three dancers to come and do dancing. Councillor Rush and her team from New Dot are getting some pathing news type footage to be running in the background on stage. And we've got Cottage Kitchen, I think, in mini Welsh gates and etcetera, so that we'll have an afternoon tea with the vintage China. So it's all coming in together and then I've added a bit of contingency, which brings it in at about a thousand pound. We may, the only other issue that's transferred as of yesterday is that a lot of the gazebo's that the Christmas festival have, unfortunately, we've been lent out during lockdown to various people who haven't looked at them as well and two have been damaged. So they are seeking further support to see if we could purchase some gazebo's. And like councillor Haddie said, if we were to purchase them, we wouldn't have to pay the VAT element. So it may be slightly more than this estimated amount here. But I am anticipating this to be taken out of reserves. This is a one off event, we won't be doing it again. That for this Queen anyway. And therefore, it may well possibly go to twelve, thirteen hundred pound. But if we can pin down the street closures at a low rate, it might balance out. The intention is to agree this schedule, the funding, subject to what I've just said, if you're happy to purchase new three by two gazebo's, which would be our property there. And we could maintain them and make sure that they, you know, rented out or lent out properly. Which has always been a problem because it's like, yes, you can have it and there's no control. And as I said, it would come from reserves, we've got significant reserves at the moment, which would more than cover us obviously. If members are happy, the first proposal is that we cover these costs from reserves. And the second is that we waive the charge on the town hall, which would be eighty five pound as a contribution to the inner wheel for, A, obviously not, as they're trying to do the fundraiser for their own coffers, not to penalise them as it were, or take eighty five pound off anything they're making. Does recognise the fact that it is support, yeah, over the Jubilee weekend.
Right, thank you very much, Gareth. Any comments on that? Any questions?
There's effectively two elements to this, one is the Jubilee celebration, which is at roughly a thousand pounds. And the secondary is a capital purchase of gazebo. Both of which I support separately.
Okay. Do, do we want to put the gazebo's in now?
Are they, are they for the views of this event?
They, the team that have been organised, they came to do a check on all the ones yesterday. And basically two have been damaged beyond, they cut the fabric for replacements, but the frames have been bent and snapped, so they're just not capable of being used. So they are down two gazebo's. I think councillor, Mr Sherman, Mr Austin Sherman, they looked into it. They're about a hundred and eighty pound or a hundred and ninety, but we've got to take the VAT off that, so they're coming in at about a hundred and fifty five. So we need about three hundred pound for those, but then they would be our stock and we would maintain them. I should make sure that they come in and are logged out, and if they are not lent out, a proper form is, you know.
The point I was making was, are they needed for this event?
Yes, yes, because they were relying on what they had from their knowledge and of course two of them.
Okay, so first proposal then is that we cover the cost for the key elements of the event from the general reserves account. We have a proposal for that. Thank you very much, John. Thank you very much, Jen. The second proposal, we waive the charge to the inner wheel from the town hall. Yep, thank you very much, thank you very much. And the third one is now do we amend to allow the spending of, of two gazebo's?
Purchase two gazebo's.
Purchase the two gazebo's, yeah, in absence of the asset management committee.
We have it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody against any of those proposals? Lovely. Thank you very much, Gareth.
Thank you.
Planning now. For those new, one of my little jobs before was to go through the planning applications and comment on them. I must admit, I've been a bit tight, so my comments are very slack. But nonetheless, I have gone, I have been through the applications we've had in. And the first one, O three, twenty twenty two, twelve. This is the erection of a single storey rear extension at the Fairway View, Hollyhead Road, down by the golf club. This came for a planning application a couple of months ago and we approved it then. It's come back to us because the conservation people wanted the wall where it joins on to corner of the house come back a hundred mil so that they could face it with stone rather than it just being a straight giant. So that's what they've done, that's the only change they've made. They've moved the actual extension back a hundred mil. So as we approved it last time, I can't see us having any problems with it again this time. And the one underneath that is zero, zero, thirteen, that is exactly the same because it's it's a listed building application, so it comes to us twice. So do we get proposal for that and a second for that? Go ahead. Thank you very much, thank you. The next one is zero, three, twenty twenty two, zero, two, six, one. This one, Gareth, we actually approved on the twenty sixth of the fourth, twenty two.
And again, as a retrospective.
Yeah, so that one we don't need to worry about because we have approved that. And our letter is in the document pack on the website. O three, sixty, proposed works to trees within the Frank Gotham Town Conservation Area. And this is at the Hand Hotel on Bridge Street. Now, in their garden, they've got nine trees, I think it is. Gander?
This is the riverside garden, is it?
It is, where they've put the new deck, there's a lot of Leylandi that have grown, they want to lop them off at a height roughly level with the road. And then there are no comments included about what the other trees are. So there's a lot of what look like Leylandi, or there could be another anaphorus tree.
There's quite a few holly trees in there.
There are, and there's a lot of multiple branches, which they're all lopping off at just about, you know, just hedge height above the road. And I don't see there's any special species in there at all, because they all look much the same, so. So the ball's in your court, ladies and gentlemen.
Would it be worth, um, maybe referring back to them and specifying what they actually intend to cut and trim back? In retrospect, the intent to do there. I think just a generic saying of trimming back trees could lead you, um, to certain trees completely disappearing.
Yeah, none of them are actually disappearing. None of them are being like greater than halfway up the tree they're lopping. So not lopping anything further down than halfway.
I, I, I suspect where they're cutting them, I'm familiar with the, that place as you, as you know. I strongly suspect that it's more to do with the view from the bedrooms looking down onto the garden.
Exactly, and light onto the hotel.
Yeah, so they don't want them any higher than the wall, so that they get a clear view of the, of the lawn and stuff.
So, but coming back to councillor Morris's comment, we could, I think, Gareth, go back to them and ask them for a species list, could we? Which I'm sure the council will do, Dembysia will do anyway, I think.
We, we're only council tees, so.
Uh, okay.
We, all we could say is we have concerns and we would want to ensure that no species are removed in their entirety. But we're happy for the works providing they are carried out and detrimental to the health of trees, something like that, we can suppose.
Is everybody in agreement with that? They're not killing any special species or anything, there's no special tree there?
Yeah, great. So we, we can support it with that caveat that we want to ensure that, you know, they are on it, that they don't damage it. Okay.
Excellent. 414, erection of a garage at Hilvren Sunbank. Uh, this is the bungalow next to the Sun Trevor, as you're looking at Sunbank. Excuse me. It's basically a standard double garage with a pitched roof and solar panels on one side of it. Uh, it's overlooked slightly by clover mount at the back. Um, but it's not going to be detrimental to anybody's, um, light or anything like that. So it doesn't affect anybody because it's quite a remote property. So can't see us being able to say anything about that one. Uh, everybody in agreement? Uh, the next one. 03 2022 0407. This is an existing lawful development certificate for the formation of a hard surface for livestock and agricultural supplies on, on produce off and onto land from the carriageway on the 539. This is by the Oreg, as we're going into Trevor, you've gone around the S bend on the right hand side, you'll notice that somebody set up camp there with a couple of caravans and things, they put in a hard standing down. Now, they're saying it's for the, uh, formation of hard service for livestock and agricultural supplies, produce. Okay, they do need to get back on and off their land. One concern I might have is that are they trying to build a little village there slowly of caravans?
There seems to be a lot of caravans involved, doesn't there?
There are. Um, the applicant, not that it makes any difference, is not from the area. Do we have any comments?
Do they own the land?
They do own the land, yeah. It was sold in auction, wasn't it, that's it?
Yeah, it was, yeah. So that one, as it's a development certificate.
Councillor Morris has a view on this, hasn't he?
Yeah, I think we just.
I'm, I'm very much with you, councillor Cadiz, or chairman Garry, that, um, I think unless you're very, very careful, um, it's, it's a, it's a very broad spectrum i- in which it could be applied. So a more specific, um, detailed approach could be, um, requested from that. Obviously, you, we're well aware that one thing can lead to another and so forth, um, which inevitably could end up shooting yourself in the foot, pardon the term. So I think a broader, um, and a narrow aspect to, to fully define what they actually reply would be much, much better.
Well, they've actually done the work and they've supplied photographs of the hard standing. Uh, which is why it's an existing lawful development certificate. Cause it's already existing. So basically they put a load of hardcore down by the gate. And it's, it's got weeds growing through, it's been there for quite a while.
Well, it's only been there for less than six months.
Well, sorry, yeah, but, uh, it, it didn't appear overnight. So I don't know what we can do with that one, Gareth, if it's there.
Well, I mean, you, you can if you so desire, express your concern and not support the issuing of a certificate at local power.
Right, okay.
I mean, that's, you know, if you, if you, if, uh, that could then lead to enforcement action against them if the county were minded to listen to the town council. But they've obviously been asked to supply this, uh, certificate or application. You're within your right to say you're unhappy and you want them to support it.
Are they trying to create an agricultural hole just to justify living on it?
We don't know. That's, that's one thing we don't know, Scotland.
I, I think if we were being asked to, uh, as, as it says, um, a hard standing, if they provided a gateway with a wide display and a hard standing so that the tractor and the trailer didn't get bogged down, uh, we wouldn't be having any discussion on this matter. But the three vehicles plus the two caravans and the further one down the field do rather give the, the suspicion that it's more just hard standing that we're discussing here.
It does ring an alarm bell, doesn't it? So any proposal from anybody of what we do?
Have the A, O and B been approached for their comments?
They, they will have been, but there's been no comments passed yet.
Okay.
I don't think, anyway, just bear with me a second, let me just double check on that one. No, uh, the application's only just gone in, so sometimes it falls that we've had Welsh Water. In fact, we've had that Welsh Water one in. And Welsh Water just concerned about draw water, which is not their normal standard letter, but the A and O B haven't commented yet. So we're ahead of the game there. We can't wait for them. We'll have to do hours before they do theirs.
I, I think we can express concern that, um, we're not entirely satisfied with purely a hard standing as suggested. And if it further develops, it would be subject to any condition.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's quite fair, actually. And everybody else agree? Anybody disagree? Seconded?
I, I quite agree with what you're saying, you know, obviously it, it's obviously entrances to Fungoffin as well, so, um, obviously it, it, it's not the, it's not the, um, the entrance that we really require or want, um, into our beautiful town. So, um, it, it would maybe be worthwhile, um, going against, um, their, their current application, um, until further information can be sourced, I think.
Yeah. So we have two proposals. Do we have a second for anyone?
Are they both the same, or are they just worded differently?
Just allocate them. So in, in fact, we have a, a proposal and a second that we're against it in principle.
Yes.
Well, we're.
And, and we will monitor it. I'm sure, again, Dembysia will be monitoring that one, I'm sure, but they haven't, we haven't been allocated.
I think we'd have to go against it in the light of we haven't got enough information.
Yeah, but it's, it's more than just the hard standing, isn't it?
Yeah, on the, on the face of it. Uh, going back to planning. Dembysia, we've got a meeting on the 24th of May, I think that's when, uh, planning gets allocated then. For new members of Dembysia council. So that's all the planning applications we've had in. We've had a couple of certificates of decision, Landoff Vicarage Road approved. And two and three Bryn Derwyn, Rell approved. That concludes our business, ladies and gentlemen.
Um, chat, uh, sorry, chat, I think we missed a few of the minutes last week in our melee on the teams.
Oh, I apologize, did we?
No, no, I, I know, I just noticed, but.
No, we did.
It's formally to accept it or otherwise.
I propose we, we accept the minutes as a true record of the meeting.